Start our meeting, if everyone could please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance. Let's start with the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next order of business is public comments. You read public comments this morning? Mr. Tommo?
I'll try not to use too much time because this agenda is pretty heavy tonight, I notice.
Okay.
Some time ago, I requested an opinion from town council about whether StanTech was in conflict. And I have here a memorandum dated 5th November 2017 from the Joel Khan. And in number one, he states that, on behalf of the town of Maynard, at the owner's sole expense, completed a complete camera study from the subject property to the town's lift station. The report provided pictures indicating certain issues within the pipes and manholes, which we all knew about. And I say that since StanTech did this survey, and we employ them as town engineers, that they are in conflict. And somebody suggested to me when I was asking a few questions, and it said, they said, "Well, who paid them?" I said, "Well, no matter how you figure it, if the developer picked up the tab, whether they gave the money to the town, and then the town gave the money to StanTech, it still constitutes a conflict of interest." And as I say, if town council or the board doesn't wish town council to give me an opinion, there are other avenues that can be used, but I like to kind of keep it local if I can. The other thing that I'd like to speak about is, some time ago, I made the comment here that we do have in the bylaws a provision for three members of an advisory committee for the DPW, and also a five-member cable commission. We had given out cable contracts here recently, and I noticed that Comcast shortly after they got their renewal, they went up on all their rates. So, you know, I don't know, I haven't seen any advertisements that we're going to have these committees, and whether they, they used to be valuable, depending on what people you've got on them. Also, we had a discussion, time and time again, about water being a finite resource. And certain discussions were held in this room and at other places that we would look into, putting White Pond back online. And I heard, heard somebody say something about, somebody was working on it, but nothing seems to happen. And I think the way we're going now with 129 Parker Street, Powder Mill Place, a couple more buildings that Mr. McDonald is putting up, I think the water situation may very well get worse. Because the well that they're proposing up at 129 Parker Street isn't going to work very well, because the water is lousy. It's a shallow well, and all they're going to do is drill a hole in the same area, suck up the same bad water. I have the letter that was sent to the board, I obtained it under the Freedom of Information Act, about the special town meeting. I do agree with what the, I went to the finance committee, by the way, on the meeting they had on January 14. And it was very difficult to get into the building. The meeting was scheduled for seven o'clock, and the place was locked up tight in a bull's butt. Couldn't get in. Finally, we raised the town accountant in one of the offices there, and he very obligingly opened the door. I think you attended that meeting, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Okay. So, I wholly agree with what the finance committee proposes, but my one concern is that you've got in that so-called vault over there, reams and reams of surveys and stuff, and it never comes to pass. We spend money, $3,000 here, $5,000 there. The consultants give us all the stuff, they tell us what we need to do, and nothing happens. I remember very well, back in the '60s, when I was on the finance committee, before we changed the town charter and every department was separate, the Public Works Department used to put out a deal where they were going to relay water and sewer pipe on certain streets and certain amounts and all that. Never come to pass. So, you know, if, if you were going to follow what the finance committee says here, and I, I still take umbrage at the fact that our town officials don't seem to feel that citizen petitions are the way to go. But anyway, if, if this comes to pass and you do it, I would hope, I don't know whether I'll be around, but I would hope that whatever they put in the survey actually ends up being done. And being in business on Powder Mill Road, I have a large concern because the day for lovers is coming up, approximately the 14th of next month. And I make no bones about it, we sell a goodly amount of product for that holiday. And I don't know how much goof-up the construction on Powder Mill Road is going to affect my, well, not a goof-up, but the construction on Powder Mill Road is going to affect my business. So, anyway, back at the ranch, and also, I'd also like to ask once again if we had gotten a report from the attorney general's office on the special town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, the StanTech, we have requested a response from town council as to whether or not they believe that they're in agreement with you or not over the conflict of interest on StanTech and the, you know, the study and the results of the study as they pertain to Powder Mill We haven't actually reacted to the DPW and cable advisory committees yet, but we will. And then, as far as White's Pond, we're in the middle of, Aaron could speak to that because he's here, we're in the middle of, you know, getting the information as to exactly what that means today. Because we have information as to what it meant in 1990, in 1995.
Exactly.
But what it means today is different. So, we're in the middle of trying to find out exactly what that means. And as far as the report from the finance committee, I would think that, I can only speak for myself, but I think all five of us agree that there are, you know, different parts of that thing that we wholly agree with, there's different parts that we agree a little, and some parts where we're, you know, might be a little bit out of their purview. But certainly, it's a document that we all have, and we're all going to, you know, work off of and pay attention going forward. So, we're on the same place as far as that concerned.
The other, the other thing I might mention, I understand that when the contract was given for this piece of work, for the wastewater line, or whatever you want to call it, that if I remember rightly, when I read the ad in the Globe, it said the contract would be awarded for 300 calendar working days. I don't know what exceptions have been made for the winter season or what have you. But anyway, I would appreciate it if they didn't tie the traffic up too long down there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Hi, Betsy Gartstein, Main Street. I'm just really tired of seeing trash around town. And I had raised this issue like over a year ago, when we had the Kevin Sweet, right, town administrator, and he mentioned something about getting some kind of like solar compactors, and I've yet to hear anything about it. And I don't know what, you know, budgetary issues are surrounding that, but I personally would like to see them. I think Maynard should be forward-thinking. I don't, you know, I, other towns have this, so Maynard, you know, it's not like Maynard would be the first, but it's good for the environment, takes care of, you know, trash that's sitting around. And then secondary to that is, a whole bunch of snow just melted on the rail trail, which I use a lot, I walk my dog. And there's like all this trash, like food garbage, corn cobs, it's, you know, so that's another issue of like people, and I'm not saying it's the people who live there and throwing their trash there, I, I don't know. But that's just something that needs to be addressed, and I know that we want to keep the rail trail kind of natural, and I'm totally all for that, not plowing it. But there's something that needs to be done about it, because it just, it makes the town look kind of crappy, and I don't like seeing it that way. And, you know, that's just my thoughts, so I'd really, I'd like to get some feedback from you, since you're town administrator, and I don't know you, because I heard something about these solar compactors, and not since, so.
Would you like me to speak?
Sure. You're talking about, you're talking about not, you're talking about people just throwing a wrapper on the ground type of trash? Is that the type of trash you're referring to?
Yeah, like just around town, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, she's basically talking about waste baskets.
Yeah, no, no, I understand, I understand. I'm just wanting to make sure we're talking about the same type of trash.
Yes.
You know, so, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not talking about, you know, people's trash in front of their house, we're talking about someone walking down the sidewalk and taking their plastic cup and throwing it on the ground rather than putting it in a recycle.
Well, we don't have recycling bins downtown, which is also unfortunate.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm, we're talking about.
That's exactly. We're talking about litter.
We could, we could dance around the semantics of it all night, I'm just wanting to make sure we're talking about the same trash problem.
Litter.
Okay. Litter, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we can talk to that.
So, thank you for bringing it to my attention, and I'm sure you're not the only one. However, you are the first person to bring it to me directly, so I appreciate that. And I will begin to look into it. I was not given any reports from my predecessor as to this solar, although I've seen them, and I know where you're referring to.
Okay, yeah.
But they do come out of policy, so I would have to do some research and find out where they should possibly be and where they could go. So, it's not going to be a quick answer.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it.
Don't go away.
Cool.
What, well, in what forum did you have that discussion with Kevin? Because I'm only asking because we've never had, this is the first we're hearing of it too, like that particular solution. So, I don't, you know, I don't object to that solution, but this is the first that...
Yeah, it may have honestly, it may have been a side conversation that I had with him, and I don't, I don't know if it was necessarily public comment. It was like, you know, a couple of years ago, so I, I just don't, I don't know, but I talked to him directly about it.
Yeah, okay. Because I just know, we, I just, you know, we, yes, sir?
I've got a couple of comments for after.
About the trash, litter?
Yep.
All right. So, the DPW director will talk about litter?
Awesome.
Thanks. We'll resolve that problem.
So, just to follow up, sorry, follow up on that. So, what I do recommend is, so, we are, we do have some similar initiatives with the EDC. We're working with individuals on installing kiosks, benches, and trash cans along the rail trail, so we do have that avenue. I do also recommend like the BEEP grant as an option for residents to come forward, could be a funding source for trash cans downtown. We do have some receptacles, but if we were to look into some more expensive ones like the solar compactors, that could be a funding source that would be maybe through the EDC and then the Board of Selectmen. Those are things that we have talked about on a department level.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Bill, can you do, can you look into the BEEP for that? If there's anything there for that type of thing?
I'll just reach out.
If you can, when you get a chance. Anybody else? All right. Thank you. Minutes, we have to accept some minutes. And the minutes are, the minutes of January 2nd, and the motion is that we move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of January 2nd, 2019, as shown. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments, concerns about the minutes of January 2nd? All those in favor of acceptance? Thank you. Correspondence items. Move to accept and approve the 18 correspondences A through R as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, the only comment I have about it is the, the one item that we talked about, I asked you about, with the, the one from the school, is actually addressed to, I didn't know, I thought it was addressed to us when I first saw the item, but it's actually addressed to the state.
That's right.
So, anyways, but that was the only one. I had a question, does anybody have any questions or comments about the other several items? One, one thing that's to talk about, in case anyone has a question about it, was the parking management plan, revision 7-1 and 7-2. Jack McKean is not here to talk about it tonight, he, he wanted to give us a chance to absorb it before he comes in, and he's going to come in at a future date and actually talk to us about it. So, that's on there, in case anyone had a question about that. Just make sure there's none of that like that.
I had a question about the Keen Ave. I was just wondering, so where it officially stands? Did the, do you know if the developer got back to Wayne again as to whether, because you gave them the, the punch list of, of things that they still haven't done, but it looked like, it looked like seasonally, they weren't going to be able to do some of that stuff.
That's probably true. So, they answered me that they were able to give them a reply, so what you have is the latest that we have.
Okay.
But that's, but Wayne was working the day today, and I, and I stopped collecting a response last week, so.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just...
It's going to be an update, and we'll, we can provide it to you for the next meeting.
Excellent.
I have a couple of questions. First off, to bounce off of the Keen Ave issue, I'm happy to see that, that we're following up on that, because over the years, there have been a number of situations, development agreements and other types of situations where developers have done what they wanted to do, gotten their, their, you know, their goods, and left and not completed what they have promised to do over the years. And then we end up having to spend money to accept streets and everything else down the road, and it takes time and money and effort. Going back to, I think the one, Chris, you were talking about was, that was addressed to the state, A.
The first one, yeah.
I see that they say, "Be it resolved, demand public school committee urges the legislature..." So, the school committee voted on this? Because I was, I was concerned that they were asking us to endorse for them to send it to the legislature. And then I said, "Well, jeez, if they want our endorsement, we'd want to talk about it, and beyond that, I don't know..."
It was confusing to me, though, the wording of it was confusing to me, because it seemed like it came from a, you know, different, like a different group, like the secretaries and whatnot.
Yeah, it was like a union, yeah.
To us, but it actually was from them to the state, and I don't...
But they're looking for your endorsement to go to the state.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But according to Ms. Moore from the school department, they did get from the school committee, so they would like a similar endorsement from this body.
And if that's the case, we'd, we'd have to put it on an agenda, and we'd have to, you know, have an opportunity to understand what it all, what is all about, and I don't know what their timeline is.
I don't know. So, if you'd like, we can make those arrangements.
Seems as though, it looks like the, this, this is, the last line is that the budget formula by May 1st, 2019. But, yeah, I, I think... I was confused, I think, not alone, I think there was some confusion over exactly what was being asked of us in relation to this one. So, if somebody had some hand in writing this, or if it's, if it's a school committee's, you know, if it's a school, school committee's document, they could come in and tell us exactly, someone could come in and tell us exactly what they think it means and what it, you know, what the significance of, and then we can vote on it. And I don't think there's, you know, there's nothing controversial there as far as we're concerned, it's just make sure we understand exactly what we're looking at.
Yeah, and I'm not, quite honestly, I don't understand what the impact of, and I don't know if the school department understands what the impact of the, the foundation budget changes might be. We had sort of a side discussion at our budget subcommittee, you were there.
It is complicated.
And it seems like they weren't absolutely certain if what is being fought for through the governor's office will actually benefit Maynard.
Because I don't even think it's clear, from my very loose understanding, I think the governor's plan was a seven-year plan, so, so there wouldn't be, well, although it seems like there is some more immediate changes, the end goal, it won't be coming to fruition for some time. So, I think it's good to get some clarification, or at least get their understanding, and we can do that.
And I'm not sure, but I believe that this document comes out of the fact that within the last two meetings of the school committee, either Jamie and/or Jamie and Kate were at a school committee meeting, and that's, you know, so I'm imagining this document came out of that, that interaction, but I could be wrong.
Or in preparation for that interaction.
Yeah, but no, it seems like it came out afterwards, though. They were, they've already been there. They've already been to their meeting.
That's true, that's true. Representative Hogan attended on Thursday night, and I don't recall.
Yeah, Jamie was there.
Jamie was there a couple of times before.
Jamie was there like the week before, so maybe it's from those that it came, but...
Anyway, it is something that has been asked to be addressed, it's been hold for a long time.
Yeah, and I'm sure, there's no doubt, based on the fact that the foundation budget itself hasn't been, or the formula hasn't been shifted in 25 years, or whatever the number is. So, there's something going on there, but the issue from my perspective is, how does this affect Maynard? And nobody seems to know. If it's going to help us, let's go for it and fight for it and whatever. If it's not going to help us, and it might in fact even hurt us, because it drags more money away from a smaller community like us, and gives it to a larger community like Lowell Lawrence or Boston, you know, I don't want to be fighting for something that's going to hurt us, even though it might be a good thing overall. Then the next comment I had was on item C, was, which was, I think, from the planning board. There was a request for comments relative to the Nason Street Marijuana, whatever.
Retailer.
Store.
Retailer.
But the deadline for providing comments is today, and we, this is the first we saw of this, you know, because, yes, we got this on Thursday, as, but I don't know if we ever got a request for comments as a board prior to that. And again, it's not on our agenda, but I know there, and I'm sure you know too, there is some concern around town about that particular location that we've heard here at our board, I've heard offline, you know, out from comments in the street. So, I think it's important, if, if we can't present our comments to the planning board as a whole, which we can't, because we don't want to talk about it with not having been on the agenda, I think it's important to encourage residents who might be watching on television or are here in the audience tonight, to attend this public hearing on February the 12th, and express any concerns that you might have about, and I'm not talking about marijuana sale in general, I'm very supportive of the process and whatever, it's this particular location that people are expressing concern about, which for those who are not familiar with it, it's basically where the meeting place used to be, which is on the corner as you're, as you're coming down Nason Street and round in the corner. As these businesses become more and more prevalent throughout the Commonwealth, I'm sure that the popularity of people flocking to them is not going to be as great as it has been. But the initial ones, as we've seen on the news, the parking issues that have established, and the traffic that have established have been tremendous. And I'm not commenting one way or another of my own personal opinion, I'm commenting specifically on what we've heard here, and what we've heard, what I have heard from residents on the street.
Although I echo the same sentiment, but at the same time, I think they, they took some steps, looks like based on the application or what they, they presented to us, that they took some steps in, in rectifying some of those concerns that, that the public is having. But I still echo what David said. I have myself, I've heard many, many people say that they have concern about that location.
The one down that we saw presented here on Main Street, I think, was overwhelmingly, from my perspective, was, was a positive thing, no, no issues at all, they were, they were well-prepared, they have the parking, they have what they need. This one is a little bit concerning, and so I, you know...
Sure. Well, just to, so the board has an idea, first of all, regarding the routing out of, what we're trying to do, and process is getting better, but it's probably not perfect, but when, my intent is to route out any applications where we need comments, we have a number of entities, and the selectmen would be part of that. So, perhaps there's a better way we can do it, because this, should have had time to comment back. So far as timeframe to comment back, it's fine, you can, you can let me know this week. And, and the, the only reason is, when we have extensive comments, particularly things like engineering comments or something, we can't have them the day of the hearing and expect the board to do it. So, I, honestly, I tried to put two weeks, you know, so it has it. But, but there's no worries at all. If anybody wants, has any comments, I would appreciate it, and you can just send it to me, and I'll make sure that the board gets them.
We can, we can always, as, as residents, attend the planning board meeting and express our, our concerns, but as, you know, as the Board of Selectmen, we have to, if we wanted to comment to the planning board on this topic, we would have to have it on an agenda and discuss it.
Of course.
And I guess we do have a meeting next week, which is before this meeting, so theoretically we could have that discussion. But I saw the deadline of February, of January 29th, and I said, "Well, jeez, that's great, that's today."
Yeah, no, that was, yeah, but yeah, absolutely. And it helps me, because anything I know that are specific concerns, when I can identify them, I can present them to the planning board ahead of time. And in this case, for example, I've anticipated, you know, a fair number of things are going to probably come up, and so, you know, it allowed me to draft potential conditions, you know, to address all these. So, really, it does make my job easier as well. But I will make sure, and we'll discuss internally how to make sure each of you get a timely memo with the packages that are routed out to our other reviewing entities. That was the intent.
And that's, that's fine, that, there's no...
Understood.
No criticism intended.
No, understood, of course.
Do you know if, do you know if offhand if Chief Dubois has a copy of the, this new distribution memo? The new revision? The document that we're looking at?
Well, they submit, or she submitted to us.
Oh, yes, 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 he does.
He has it? Because he, he was the one who had the most concerns of, of almost anybody insofar as the location was concerned.
Yes, yes, and I have met with the chief and with the owner to address some of this.
Yeah, I know, I know he had some concerns, but...
Right, absolutely. And he'll be, also, just for general information, town council, that Kate Federoff, who's the one who's versed in the recreational marijuana, will be attending our, our planning board hearing next week.
On the 12th, you mean, not next week?
12th, right, right.
February 12th?
Yes, February 12th.
7.
And if I, just to address one earlier, just for the board's information, we were
talking about the Keen Avenue and following up, what we've been doing now, in the last four years or so, we bond these projects. So, if the developer didn't, chose not to follow up, we just don't release the bond. And the bond is an ample amount to always complete any infrastructure improvements that needed to be done. So, it's nothing that really, you know, we prefer not to do it, but there's an incentive for the developer to comply.
Okay. All right. Any other questions about that one?
Yeah, I do have one thing, because I know that, you know, Chris, you mentioned Jack's not going to be here tonight to present the, the draft for the parking management. Can I make a recommendation, a suggestion for the board, for us to at least take a look at it and think about? One of the things that is proposed in that is about a parking authority, so I think we should definitely take that into consideration and think about how...
Is he, do you think, do you know offhand if they anticipate there being a paid position or a volunteer position?
No, no, no.
No, that was just a recommendation, that wasn't recommended in any way, whether it's going to be paid or not, but I think that he's just, that's a recommendation that came from that committee.
Yeah.
But that's something we should think about it now, seriously about, before he even comes to make the presentation, I'm just making that as a suggestion.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to reread the motion, because it's been a while. Move to accept and approve the 18 correspondence items A through R as presented, and it was seconded by Justine. And all those in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Bill. On to consent agenda, and the consent agenda, the motion is that we move to accept and approve the seven consent agenda items A through G as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the consent agenda items?
I had a question about the Battle Road, the, well, not the Battle Road, the Boys and Girls Club race. So, it's going to be the same route as the Jingle All the Way? Was, do you know if that was the same route? Was, do you know if that was the same route as the Boys and Girls Club race last year? Just curious, anybody?
The which one?
Okay.
Isn't the, isn't the Boys and Girls Club in March?
Yes, that's the one we're approving. But it was, it's the same route as the Jingle All the Way was?
Yeah.
And I was just curious if that, if they've changed that or not, I was just curious.
We think not, but we'll find out. We have time, but. Does anybody have any other questions? Well, those I, we answered.
One question, is the Earth Day event, the one that last year was held for the first time down, okay. Because then there was something in our packet too that talked about Arbor Day, which I'm assuming is a different event that's required because of our green tree, community garden, green, green, something green, whether it's the green.
Tree City USA.
Huh?
Tree City USA.
Yeah, that's a different event than this and that, okay. I wanted to verify that the Earth Day one was the one that last year was held down at the parking lot across the way. First year they held it, pretty successful for a first year, so, okay.
Are we putting rubber animals into the water again? Do we know? I just know that one of them was last year on that date.
They were like, yeah, biodegradable, biodegradable boats.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah.
Biodegradable boats, yeah.
And I don't think it caused a problem.
Yeah.
No, it wasn't a problem, I didn't know if they were just doing something, but.
Can I ask Aaron a question?
If you'd like.
Do you anticipate having to call someone in, or do you think that the, whatever trash is picked up can wait until, like, put in the bags and kind of wait until Monday?
Either way, in the past it's waited.
Okay, yeah.
I haven't heard a response back, I hear back from.
Okay.
The people that requested that stuff picked up, so.
Excellent, all right.
Typically, in the past, we've given them specific color bags, we know which comes from that event, we ask them to find the location.
Yeah, and then you just go back around Monday and pick everything up, perfect.
Okay. Any other questions about the consent items? All those in favor? Thank you. Item number five, is it interview a candidate for the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission? Hello? I'm gonna guess, is it Catherine?
Yes.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I really, maybe we need the motion and then we can get into, the motion is that we move to appoint Catherine Evans to the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission as a replacement for Susie Coughlin with a term that expires on June 30th, 2020. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Catherine?
Have you participated in any of the meetings that have gone on with the current board?
Once the last meeting.
You did. I guess my follow-up question would be, what type of thoughts do you have about what you observe around town relative to, you know, accessibility? And what thoughts you might have about where we might be lacking, or where we might be strong?
I don't know, but I think that because of my own issues with mobility, I think that I have something to offer to try to figure that out, you know?
Okay, anybody else?
I don't. Thank you for, thank you for your interest in being on the committee, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. I mean, I don't have any questions, I appreciate the fact that you're volunteering and welcoming to the committee, and we'll vote, so all those in favor? Thank you for volunteering and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Becky will, I think, have to get sworn in, so Becky can explain that in two seconds. Thanks, Elijah. Next up, we have an interview and appointment for a new board member to the Board of Assessors.
Welcome.
Motion to appoint Rosalind Greenstein to the Board of Assessors with a term expiring June 30th, 2021. And I see Angela's here to introduce us all. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, sorry. I was so excited, there's two people in front of us, I get distracted. But, good evening.
Good evening.
Does anybody have any questions for Rosalind?
Yeah, I just got a quick question, so first of all, thank you for volunteering to participate in that assessors board. One of the things, I'm looking at your resume, and obviously you have a very impressive and extensive resume, but nothing there shows me that you have any experience in, you know, assessing, you know, property. So I don't know if that.
I have experience in land valuation.
Okay, so that's, that's close enough, I guess.
And improvements upon it, I mean.
Improvements on land, you mean, of, okay.
And what gives land its value.
Got you.
So I think it's pretty much on target.
Okay.
Is that what you're, is that what you lecture on?
No, I lecture on housing policy.
Okay, all right.
Which.
It's not the same.
Which also has to do with assessing.
Exactly.
Well, you might be beneficial to come to one of our Affordable Housing Trust meetings.
I was just gonna say that.
You can have her, Dave.
We're all booked anyway, we're, we got a full, we got a full board, but I'd be interested in hearing.
I'd be happy to.
All right, does anybody have any questions about anything else? Certainly, I mean, your resume certainly clearly covers everything we could want from somebody as an assessor. And you got one opening or two?
Two openings, after her, we'll just have.
We'll just have one.
Did someone step down recently? Was it Chris Worthy?
Yeah, Will, Will Doyle.
Will, yeah, Will.
Well, that was Chris Worthy.
No, I have not gotten his resignation yet, so.
Well, how many assessors should you have, three? And right now you only have one?
No, I have two, I have Will and Steve.
Okay, but Will's gonna leave. I thought this was to replace Will, okay.
I think this is replacing Chris Worthy, right?
Correct.
Okay.
This is to replace Chris Worthy.
Will thinks he left already, but.
Not yet, not yet.
Okay, so, all right, so we're replacing Chris with Rosalind, and then we'll have to replace Will once he makes it official.
Correct.
Which I'll, I'll send him a note and say, in or out, make it official so we can move forward.
Well, he promised he wanted one more meeting.
Okay.
Oh, if he forgot time.
You threaten him. All right.
A promise is a promise.
Again, no, we appreciate the fact that you're willing to volunteer, because I know that the assessors, more so than some of the other committees in town, do spend a lot of time at certain times of year together going through the process, and we appreciate the time, so thank you for volunteering. But other than that, if anyone doesn't have any other questions, we'll vote. And all those in favor of appointing Rosalind? So again, swearing, Becky will have the swearing of the clerk, Town Clerk's office.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have.
You can.
Professor Greenstein is, also was so kind to willing to volunteer for the Economic Development Committee, which is a town administrator appointed position, so we did.
Perfect.
Okay.
So we're getting in the morning sun sometimes.
Congratulations.
That's awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number six, class two dealer license, six-star auto repair.
Your children's bedtime.
It's okay. So make a motion that we, to accept and approve class two dealer license for six-star auto repair, 260 Main Street, Maynard, Mass., and the owner is Justin McCarrio.
Second?
Thank you. This is, this is the mobile station? Yeah. Good guess.
Gave that up.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for, for Justin?
Did you?
I have one quick question. From the documents that I read, it's only anticipated that you'll have one car for the most part?
Yeah, maybe two at the most.
Okay, so to that extent, how do we assure that the, is that Rick's domain to, to go out and make sure that the limits are?
Enforcement officer.
Yeah, so he's, he's the one that enforces that. What's, what's the penalty?
I don't know. So I'd have to ask.
Yeah, okay.
What, having more than one car?
Having like 15 cars instead of two, I mean, do you just please move them, I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, well, I mean, yeah, we would.
And then it's, then there would be a fine after a period of time.
Yeah, we're, he doesn't go around slapping fines, so we, we would inform the property owner of what the regulations are and work with the property owner to meet those requirements. Yeah, it's, but Rick, Rick's aware of this situation. Have you met the commissioner, Rick Adams?
I don't believe so.
Well, he, I'm sure he knows where you are, so he, he'll keep his eye out.
Okay.
He'll show up.
Now, the intent, the intent, I guess, of my question is just to assure, and I don't think it's going to, because people stop in for gas. You don't want it to turn into a used car lot.
No, I just, I have the shop, and I like to maybe offer a little bit more to the customers that come into the shop.
Yeah.
So I'm not looking to turn it into.
Got it, got it, okay.
Full-on dealership.
Yeah.
But just to offer a little bit more.
Yeah, okay.
Did you guys recently acquire that business, or have you been there?
I took the shop over in April, and I took the whole station over in August.
All right, congrats.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome to Maynard. Yeah, I think one of the issues was somehow it got, sort of fell through the cracks that the ownership had changed, is that, is that true?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I thought I read that somewhere.
You look a lot younger than the prior owner.
Yes, sir.
You know, where is this gonna be located?
Same, same place where the mobile station is now.
At the end of Main Street.
Right, the Main Street.
Corner of Main Street and 117.
Great Road, yeah.
Great Road and Main Street, yeah, yeah.
So you, the spots that you're gonna be parking your cars on our right side there, is that what you're thinking about?
Probably like right out front by the big mobile sign.
Oh, the main, okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Historically, I had a three-car permit.
For that area.
When I was at that mobile station.
Wow, that's been a long time, Steve.
You had a what kind of permit? What did you have?
He had a, he had a three-car, three-car permit.
I'm gonna test you now.
Wow, how many years ago is that? Wow, 10 years ago.
Time flies, time flies, okay, so unless anyone has any other questions for the McCarrios, we will vote, and all those in favor of the license? Thank you and good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
So item number seven has been postponed at the request of the group, Cool School Property Working Group. Greg has sent out to us, I don't know if everybody saw it before they came to the meeting, their action items and their, their proposals type thing, and I guess they're gonna come the fifth? So just, you know, if anybody has, you know, if everyone could read through those and then kind of have any questions ready.
And I do have to give Linda the, you know, real kudos, because she took the time out to reach out to all of us individually, and I think that was, that was a smart move.
Very thorough.
Yeah, very, very thorough, and I'm very impressed with the way she went through the process.
All right, Friends of Maynard Soccer, Fowler Field update.
Hello, everybody.
The floor is yours. Hello.
So, oh, got it. So I am Jim Hines, for those who don't know me, and this is Steve Jones, and we are kind of wearing two hats tonight. We are both on the Recreation Commission, but are also members of an organization called Friends of Maynard Soccer, which was put together about three years ago to support the school soccer program, and soccer in general in, in Maynard, but with the kind of a primary goal to start of improving, renovating the fields that the soccer team practices and plays on. Right now, Fowler Field is the practice facility for both varsity teams and the game facility for both JV teams and both middle school teams. And it is, so there's about 120, maybe 130 kids who are probably, and that doesn't include the Maynard U Soccer, who uses it in the spring. And it's in pretty bad shape, it has been since we've been here a long time ago, and so our goal was really to kind of make that a playable facility. So we were here last March to kind of tell you what we were, we were up to, and kind of felt like it made sense for us to come back. The obvious couple of new members of the Board of Selectmen, a new town administrator. So we want to kind of give a recap, kind of tell you where we're at, and kind of what the timeline is, and kind of, you know, go from there with any questions or anything like that. So I just told you that. Some of the statistics, obviously, U Soccer, visiting towns, high school, I'm not bad at my numbers. So where we started, it was three years ago, there's no, there was no irrigation, the pH was pretty bad, field doesn't drain correctly, the soil's pretty bad. So we, that's some, some pictures of the current field, make sure how dated those pictures are. Some comments, which we've had over the, over the year, years, about the field, whether it's parents, or players, or coaches. So this is an artist's rendering, what we had, what we envisioned, and this is obviously potentially, you know, maybe this is maybe wishful thinking, but, you know, our goal is to have two regulation-sized soccer fields that we, in theory, could rotate on an annual basis so that where you see them that way, another season could be another way to keep them fresh and to, you know, so that the wear and tear is not doing it. The goal would be to have some netting, I don't know, anybody who's had kids who've played over at Fowler Field and has to go and get the, get the balls and get the ticks and all that sort of stuff, so to have some netting on the, I'm not sure if it's north and south or east and west, someone else probably, maybe west, east and west.
Sides.
I'm not sure, on those sides of the field. And so it's really gonna be, hopefully, that would, that's, that's our goal, that's our endgame. This was, we, we've been working with Aaron and DPW and VHB and Wayne for the last three years on this. They did a study, we went to CPC, asked for money for a study, they granted that, CPC's been fantastic with us. That study, VHB produced, essentially came to this slide, which is essentially what we are shooting for, which is basically the renovation and regrading of the, of the field. Irrigation, we've put as an ad alternate, and I'll, I'll speak to that in a minute, and then there's a contingency. So the total need per the study is about $450,000. Before you want any questions about that, I know we've seen this slide before, but.
Just so you know where we progressed, our original estimates out of VHB were approximately $2 million. So we have scaled it down to try to make this as economical and doable as we can.
When you were here last time, I think it was still at 750, wasn't it? Close to 750, was it that high last time you were here?
No, we went from a couple million down to about, to about this, I think this is what we were shooting for.
At one point when we were here, it was, it was close to that.
It may have, you know what it may have been, Chris, is that? We had, they had a couple of ad alternates, one was irrigation, one was, you know, to put sod on, which I think was another $150,000. So it's possible that it may have been, it may have been more.
And on the rendering, previous screen, light poles up there with lights, is that, that's dream?
We went, we went, we went, we went full-blown.
That's Wizard of Oz.
In, in a, in a perfect world, and with, you know, down the road with.
Over time, yeah.
Over time, it, it would be great to have a signature field like that, you know, that you could monetize, you could use it for tournaments, you could use it for club teams, you know, there is, people have needs for really, you know, high-end fields. You know, I know that the Maynard U Soccer, the, the, the Nishoba, they have tournaments, and whether it's Harvard, or whether it's Clinton, you know, Groton all host these things.
So you're thinking about renting out the field?
I, I think that's maybe, that's maybe a long-term goal, you know, I think right now, you know, that what we don't want to do is, 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 is over, you know, get them really nice and then, you know, use the heck out of them, and next thing you know, five years from now, it doesn't look that sort of.
So this projection that you guys are putting up the next slide, is that people that committed already, like businesses, you said 17,000?
So it's the next, that's, so, so here's where we are in terms of, so Friends of Maynard Soccer, what we've done over the last three years, from a number of perspectives, CPC has been the lion's share of it, we've been to CPC a few times. The town pledge money last year, the school pledge money, Maynard U Soccer pledge money, we've raised from businesses and fundraising. So a total, we're just under $390,000. So in terms of the shortfall, if this is accurate, if this is, comes, if the bid comes in exactly at that, we're light about 70,000. So, in terms of the shortfall, if this is accurate, if this is, comes, if the bid comes in exactly at that, we're light about $70,000. So, we are still in the midst of fundraising. We have a package that are going out to all local businesses. That $17,000 is from three businesses, so our hope is that we can raise some more. But, and, you know, there's going to be one, that's a very blurry slide, just kind of tells you what the breakdown, it's the same, it's the same slide, except as a, as a pretty pie chart.
But Jim, I, I realize that the irrigation is key to.
Yeah.
Long-term health of.
Sure.
More than health in.
Yep.
Multiple ways. But theoretically, you guys could move forward now, because you have the money other than the irrigation, is that?
Why we did, so, so it's why we did it as an ad alternate, is so that we could have enough funds to move forward with the bid package. So, the, the bid, right now, and Aaron can speak this a little bit, or he doesn't have to, but he can confirm what these, what these numbers are, is that our goal was that the bid package is going to be complete by the end of this month, or the beginning of next month. That the month of February, February, it would be posted, and that the bids would be received. March, we would review bids. They would review bids and make a decision, award the final bid, and then ideally, start digging in, in April, weather permitting. I see three outcomes, Dave. One is that, um, one is that the bid comes in lower than what we're having it here, and we're able to, we have enough money to go forward. Two is that the bid comes in, but we're able to find the money. We're able to fundraise and get to that point between now and, say, April 1st. And again, I don't know the semantics or the logistics, or, you know, how that works. Or that three, we need to postpone it, because we don't have the money. I guess there's a fourth outcome, is that we can move forward without the irrigation. Right. So, so I think those are the four outcomes. We're here, I guess, really just to kind of recap and, you know, answer any questions, to kind of show you where we're at.
I mean, to your point, you could do it in stages, probably. You know, you could start, I mean, all phases during, during a period of time.
Our fear in not doing the irrigation at the time of doing the field.
It's going to take.
Is that it's going to waste the money that we put into the field.
Exactly.
By not being able to get the good grass and the solid field turf.
The, by waiting, does it also not drive up the cost, because you're going to have to redig what you've dug? I mean, you know.
Right. It certainly will take the.
We don't, we don't.
We'll have to. Yeah, but I mean, I'm saying, if you're going to, if you're going to put irrigation, you have to dig it up anyways. And, you know, you would lay the irrigation in when you dig it up the first time. Otherwise, you're digging up what you already did, and you're going to spend the same money twice, so.
When I said phase, I meant netting and things like that.
Oh, that would be.
Netting is that stuff that we're going to continue to fundraise for and continue to hopefully raise money. I mean, the Friends of Maynard Soccer is a 501(c)(3), so we're continuing to hopefully have funds to be able to do some of those things, you know.
Maybe you'll get a contract that has passion for soccer. You could donate some of that.
That would be, that would be ideal.
I would venture to find out from Becky when the last date is, if someone wanted to, you know, perhaps request this from a special time meeting or something, if it came to it, or anything along those lines, you might want to know those dates.
Well, we were wondering if a benevolent community might be able to help us too.
You would have to, you would have to petition the benevolent community, not the benevolence selectmen.
Well, the problem, the problem is.
But anyways, I'm just saying, you know, along those lines, you know, just, just, if, if that was an avenue you would think you'd want to take, you have to have the date, just make sure you have the dates in order, so if you do go that route, we don't miss a date. You know, and I mean, we as a community, because if we miss a date, then we're stuck waiting until October or November next year, when the next special time meeting. Bid packages are going out.
The real problem is a benevolent community, as we will discuss later on this evening, I expect, doesn't have $69,000 to, to help.
Sure.
That's the real problem. I think, in reality, everybody would want to have this project done and, and be able to move forward. The, you know, having sat on, again, through the budget process, and we'll have it coming up. I just don't know if it's there. But that doesn't mean that this isn't a positive thing. I mean, I think this is great news, that you've made as much progress as you have.
Very close.
Right. We're in the final third, as they say in some.
Yeah.
We, I, I just have one other question.
Yeah, shoot.
The, in the picture, you don't have to go back to it, but in the picture, there's a, there is a, yeah, don't go backwards. In the picture, there's a, yeah, there's a baseball field there. Is the baseball field no longer going to be there?
They're going to keep the backstops. It hasn't been used in the recent past, and with the field behind the high school, all renovated.
The baseball field won't be there.
Where does the middle school kids, where do the middle school kids?
So, right now, there's two regulation baseball fields. I think there's Crow Park, and then there's.
The one behind the high school.
High school, and there's only three base, there's three baseball teams, so.
Yeah, so the middle school does not use that field?
Middle school didn't have a team last year.
Ah, that's right.
They may have a team, but I think that Crow Park, and I think there's plenty of time at Crow Park. I've been told there's plenty of time behind the high school.
Yep.
You know, I mean, we really don't have anything on the soccer, you know, so.
I just see, I just saw the picture, and I knew that, I know that, you know.
Yep.
Right.
Jim, I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So, assuming this goes forward, and you were to start digging this spring, what's the timeline for completion? And while it's being done, are there other places, do we have enough space for kids to play, so that it doesn't affect soccer season?
So, the timeline, the hope is that we would be able to play on it the fall of 2020. So, it is, it is a span of time. In terms of, in terms of playability, definitely need to address that in the fall of 19 for this, for the, for the Maynard, the, the school program. MYS has alternative places. The front field in front of the high school is not a, it's a utility field, but it's being used for soccer. There is, you know, Rockland Avenue does have facilities for most of the U Soccer, you know, so it's tight. We would probably, on the school soccer, and I'll let, Steve can speak to that, since he's heavily involved in it. And I know Kevin Caruso has been heavily involved in this process and this, and this project. So, he's aware that there would be a time when there is no practice or game facility for some of those teams, for at least a season.
How's Rockland doing as far as, because didn't, didn't we work on that?
So, yeah.
Get some type of water out there?
They do have, they do have a water sor, yes, water source. My Rhode Island accent coming out there, water, a water source. They have, I think Maynard U Soccer has really taken ownership of it, but management of it, along with DPW. I think they work pretty closely hand-in-hand to kind of maintain that field. I mean, it's, I think it's, it is what it is a little bit, so I think.
Better than it was ten.
Better than, oh, yeah.
Ten years ago.
Better than it was ten, you know, just getting water down there and, and, and being able to do that and maintain it. Has a, yeah. I mean, I think it still has its challenges, you know, and the, the parking lot still has its challenges when it, when it's, when it's April.
Bottom out.
Yeah, so, um, I answered your question.
Yeah, definitely. I was just more curious.
Do you have a comment, Aaron?
Oh, yeah, it was addressed, so we've been having, we've had multiple discussions with this group, and then also the school department, so everyone's up to speed on field use and restrictions that are going to be. Required for restoration of this field, as well as the removal of the baseball field. A lot of discussion went into that. So, the school committee is aware, school department's aware of that, so it's not something that's just being kind of done in a vacuum. It was communicated out, there was a need for that. There's still be that softball field in the back of the, of the field. They'll be left with the backstop there as well, so.
Okay. So, that's all I got.
Um, are you here also with a hat for recreation?
That we're just going to.
Or was it just for?
It's just the soccer or recreation?
Were you signed up for recreation and soccer? No?
No, this is the only, I mean, we, I mean, we can't.
Yeah, recreation.
We can't answer any of your recreation questions.
Basketball program was going.
Basketball program is going well. Thank you for asking. Denise, having Denise run it, was probably the best thing we could have done, because trying to bring somebody up to speed, as opposed to Denise, who really had been involved in it and was very passionate about it.
Breaking even, as you hope?
I don't know. What I, I will tell you that we are in the midst of, you know, you know, paying the leagues and then getting the fees, and then dealing with the referees. We're not going to know probably until March where we're at. So, the hope is that, once the season's over, we're going to kind of look at it on a hindsight level, look at, see revenues, expenses, and say, okay.
Running smoothly.
What'd you say?
It's running smoothly.
Running extremely smoothly, getting a lot of positive feedback from the parents in terms of us.
Right.
Taking it over and, and, and running it, yeah, so.
We were able to get back the same number of kids we had the year before.
Perfect.
So, that was what we were really hoping for, be over a hundred kids.
Yeah, so.
Right, thank you guys.
To enable the transition and stuff like that.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your work.
One more comment.
Yeah, sure.
So, we got the final construction drawings and details and bid package today from VHB. We reviewed it, gave it the final approval, and it'll be available for contractors to get the bid documents off the, our bid website on the 6th, and bids will be due on the 27th. So, we'll know on the 27th where the price is right.
So, there's no reason, I know you said, like, one of the, you said, I think it was your third option, was to just kind of not try to go forward, just because you knew you didn't have this part of money. But there is a value to going through the process, just to, in case something comes in lower, or just to get an idea of what we're dealing with, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, they add a 20% contingency, which they don't expect it to be there, but that's just there.
Right.
To have the money set aside. So, for the, for the primary thing, that's all there. And, I mean, I think we'd go ahead with it, no matter what we did, but then we could have more time to get money. But we'd still try to get it done before the field opened.
Yep.
Because it, it will get a better take with the grass. It'll be a better field for all, if we can just get it all done in the beginning. It's more of a timing issue. We're trying to get it all ready to go and started, that when they're done grading it and putting the sand in the new loom, and the seed goes down, that we have irrigation to make a take.
Excellent. No, I, I think it's completely worth it. I think it's definitely worth, you know, seeing what comes in, because.
Sure.
They'll come in low bits.
Never know.
Yes.
Like I said, like Armon said, maybe there's a soccer passionate, you know.
Exactly.
Attractor out there.
Neat, cool.
Send the, yeah, spread the word.
We got hooligans in town, so we could have soccer.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Authorization to negotiate contract renewal. Now, read the, I'll read the motion. The motion, in accordance with Article 5, Section 5.6 of the Town Charter, move to renew the Director of Public Works employment agreement, and furthermore authorize the town administrator to negotiate a success agreement for Board of Selectment to review and ratify. Give a second.
Second.
Mr. Johnson.
I mean, he's going to have to pass the performance review first, but.
If you can tell us what it's going to do tonight.
No, no, um, I look forward to it. I, you know, we're going to, we're going to start that process with your permission, of course. But no.
Okay.
Be fair and consistent.
Okay.
All right. I'm sure it will be. Does anybody have any questions or concerns or issues surrounding item number nine?
No.
Are all those in favor of giving Greg authority to negotiate the contract? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Item number 10 is recruitment and negotiation.
Doesn't make me approve the contract.
Yeah, for the position of, um, the ATA, I'm assuming item 10 is, and I'll read it.
Oh, yeah.
The motion is, in accordance with Article 5, Section 5.6 of the Town Charter, move to authorize the town administrator to recruit and negotiate a contract agreement with, for the Assistant Town Administrator/Executive Director of Municipal Services position for Board of Selectment review and ratification. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any conversation, discussion about this one?
Only one quick question. I'm assuming, you know what they say about that, that our proposed budget that we'll talk about in a bit. Incorporates this.
The high level.
Yeah, it incorporates this, yeah, okay.
Good question.
And you're busy interviewing, from what I hear.
Yeah, we completed our first one interviews.
Perfect.
Last name, Chico, Chicco, Chico?
One of the candidates.
Chicorelli. Is your last name Chicorelli?
I don't know, but I don't know if all the candidates have told their employers that they applied yet.
They did not.
I'll tell you offline.
They're not here. Someone asked me a question about a name, and I'm like, I don't know. Not what it is.
So, what's the next process, next part of the process? First round of interviews, and then?
Good question. So, um, we, we have some very strong candidates, and they've announced the top artist, who is the last person. So, um, we've reached out to a couple of people that'd be, help us to do that second phase, but I'm still trying to figure out what that second phase is going to look like. But it'll be short, because I knew one like yesterday. So, we're, we're going to, we're going to, soon. I can't tell you what happened, because I don't have it in mind yet. I don't have a plan yet. But Stephanie Duggan and I have been trying to figure it out, soon, very soon.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Are all those in favor of that authorization?
Sure, go ahead. Have fun.
We'll know, we'll know about it. Articles A, B, and C, draft controls. Make a motion to accept and approve draft control A. Town report acceptance is shown. Move article forward to Finance Committee for review and comments. Motion to accept and approve draft control B. Opposed equipment. Material is shown. Move article forward to Finance Committee for review and comments. And a motion to accept and approve draft control C. Authorize revolving funds, Chapter 44, Section 53E, 1 dash, 1 slash 2. As shown, move article forward to FinCom for review and comments. Give a second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, sir.
Nothing surprising, but these are pretty straightforward.
Yeah, these are the annual.
You're really just, you're just asking the town to allow yourselves to, to, you know, for the second round, just to get the surplus. For the first one, it's just the standard town report, which we're in the process of producing right now.
Right.
And then for the revolving, same as every year, although the values have changed, and that was.
I was going to say that they went up, right?
Uh, yes.
Couple.
I can't tell you off the top of my head how much, but Finance Director Mike Guzzo has, and Becky worked to get these. These are the numbers that were already incorporated into the budget submission.
Perfect.
Okay.
The values on the revolving funds went up? I think we, you talked about increasing relative to some of the inspectional services, because of the anticipated development over Parker Street.
Conservation fees went up like 10,000.
And recreation was added, because we never had recreation before last year. We never had them in, with a revolving fund, so it was added.
You're, you're correct. Think for clarification.
It was added in. But I think most of, I think the, the real changes are the inspectional services, because we were anticipating the growth. But I don't know if the other ones changed.
I can find out.
Yeah, it's not that, it really doesn't matter, as long as, you know, it's, it's very routine stuff. Because this is a revolving fund, so it doesn't even really affect anything.
Excellent.
So, um, okay. So, all those in favor of control A?
Oh, individually.
Yeah, well. All those in favor of control B? And all those in favor of control C? Okay. Budget discussion, sir?
Budget.
So, um, the budget was submitted to the, to the board by the charges deadline, January 21st. Finance Director Mike Guzzo and I have not changed it. However, we, we did get some news, not the best news, which I shared with the board, in an email from the Governor's Office. So, their House One, which is the first iteration of the, of the budget, leaving the Governor's Office, to my own stomping grounds at Administration Finance, and it'll go to the, to the, both houses, both sides of the Congress's Ways and Means Committees. The numbers didn't turn out great for us. So, based on our, our projections, we, Mike and I stuck with the trend, which was about $200,000 that we would get over the last year's budget of, of the, of the government, of the local aid that we got from the state. And it came out to this year about 20.
Thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand, I, 28, I don't know, I could tell you.
It was like 170, very short, I think.
Correct, which is, right. And so, it was 28,393. So, that means we have a shortfall in the budget that I provided to you by 172,000 dollars that either we need to make up for, which Mike and I will, will, are, started to have that conversation as to where we could do that. But I don't have those recommendations for you now. But, again, this is only the first round. So, as I said, it has to go to both the Senate and the House Ways and Means Committees, and it goes back to conference, eventually back to the governor's. And it goes back to conference, eventually back to the governor's. So it's not the final number from them. The School Department is also very concerned, because the, the greatest local aid from the state is for Chapter 70, which is education and support. And that, we, it just didn't come in very high this year. So Michelle Rinzend, as the Business Manager for the School Department, is reaching out to her contacts at the state level to find out why. What, did we, were we recategorized? Were we set in some sort of different?
Yeah.
We're not sure. So as we've already alluded to earlier, the formula is complicated, and it needs to be addressed, or clarified at least. So the School Department's working on that, because obviously they're scrambling maybe a little more than we are, but it affects all of us. So when I, I can, I'd love to entertain, you know, further recommended budget, you know, but as you alluded to, it's not on the cards this year. I can't. Seventy thousand dollars, and I'm trying to fix a shortfall that I'm legally required, that we are legally required to first. I don't know if I can entertain a new budget request.
So I understand that the state budget that's proposed is just the first iteration and has to go through other layers of approval.
Yeah.
But I also acknowledge that Maynard is probably small peanuts in that budget compared to other, you know, gaps they're trying to close. So what can we as a town do to kind of bring that issue forward so that the future, to try to change that?
So it sounds cliche, but contact your legislature. So similar to what the Per Professional's Letterman was doing within the first time he correspondence, it, it sounds like old hat, but really, you, you should contact your, your delegation, State Representative Hogan, State Senator Eldridge, and ask them to advocate on your behalf at those Ways and Means Committees.
Actually, Congresswoman Trahan was, um, all, her, her projects this year is for, is education.
Right.
So it'd be, it would be, probably be good to-
That's federal.
That's federal money, yeah.
Yeah. That's a good point, though.
It's, I mean, it's all trickle down, like, from the federal level. Is there any weight, just having been in that world, to the selectmen writing a letter, like jointly coming from us on letterhead that goes to Kate Hogan or Jamie Eldridge to present?
I don't know, because I was on the Governor's team, so I was that gag coming with the lower number. I did public safety, though, not-
Nobody liked you. No, I'm kidding.
Um, and, um, I think it does carry weight. Particularly our, our, the delegation for the town of Maynard, they have strong reputations amongst their peers. And I, and I think when, when Representative Hogan and Senator Eldridge speak, people listen. So I, I would, I would urge the board to do a similar sort of letter, or individually. It couldn't hurt.
Right. That's what I was just thinking, like-
Yeah. Ask them for their input, or at least let them know that, that, you know, this is gonna really hurt us.
Just as a Board of Elected Officials going to other elected officials, it seems like it might carry more weight.
I would always encourage that.
Yeah.
I was looking at the, um, the cherry sheets, the history of the cherry sheets today, and it looks like, and I could be reading it completely wrong, so don't, you know, don't 100% quote me. I, I know. So, you know, play it back, because it's gonna be wrong. But last year, the difference between our net last year, the end, the end line-
Yeah.
Between last year and this year, we were increased total for schools and, and local government, we got a full increase of 17,000. So how does that, I, you, you can't, you can't run, you can't run a town on that. So, I mean, that-
You can't even buy groceries for our family, we have four on that.
So you'll, again, you have to-
So that, but that was, that was kind of surprising to me when I really looked at the numbers. Like, that, I, I mean, that's not an increase, at all.
Errors, errors can be made. I mean, so, you know, it's, it does not hurt, as, as Michelle Rinzend is going to reach out to the contacts at, at the state agencies to say, hey, how did this, why this number?
Right.
Because also, maybe, maybe it's a matter of the data that they're receiving, so maybe they just have inaccurate data. I'm not sure.
Well, it's interesting that you said that, you know, we were planning on around 200,000, and we got 23,000. Like, did they skip a decimal?
I would, I hope you're right.
That would be fantastic.
But again, we did it based on, on projections. And-
Right.
Mike and I have already started to talk about, we're gonna be very conservative next year, which just means that we'll go into it with certain, like, I, again, I don't know if I'll be able to entertain these extras, sort of, so.
It's understandable.
I think the soccer field will be able to close the gap on private divisions.
Yeah, I think so.
17,000 count on three businesses.
Yeah, that's not a big gap to close.
No, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, if you says this.
Using as an example.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I just, like, I think they'll be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good, very good. And I, and I, and I really don't like to, to do triage when it comes to a program. So that's, you know, but we'll have to make some decisions this year.
But I also, I also think the, the question is the formula, because the formula using for, for Chapter 70 is not correct, from what I hear. It's old.
That's, that's right.
So, so they haven't updated the formula, they haven't changed the formula, so I don't know whether or not they're addressing that issue.
Yeah, but our, our impact was mostly on local aid side, it appeared.
No, it all trickles down. So the, the net local aid, which is that 200 grand that we thought we were going to get, but the biggest contribution to the net local aid is the Chapter 70.
Was in the schools.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now that, and then that's been assessed, so we, you know, money coming out as well. But that, that big bulk is getting processed, so.
And I think on the formula piece, that was what Congressman Trahan was, like, focusing on a lot.
Okay.
In her endeavors, like, she was going after that.
Yeah, because I think if you, if you update that, it may make a difference, because I just think that-
Well, yes, but, but the concern is, we don't know, as we sit here today, that even if they change the formula to be where they want to adjust it to, what the impact will be on Maynard. We all assume it means positive, but it may not. Because it, it, the general trend and the purpose of it is to benefit lower income and, and schools, school systems that have more special need students, which Maynard does comparatively when you look at the, at the, the numbers. But I don't think it's going to be as impactful to us. We can't hang our hat on it, in other words. It, it seems to me that we need to know more before we're gung ho, change the formula, change the formula, and putting all of our weight, weight behind it, and then finding out that it's benefiting other communities and not benefiting us.
Right, which is the rumor that I heard.
Yeah.
That, that the, it will be reshifted towards more inner-city, uh, school districts.
Yeah.
I heard something at the, I went to the MMA Mass Selectmen's Association meeting, and they actually talked about school funding, because that's apparently what all towns are talking about right now. And there was a gentleman who got up, a fellow selectman, who basically said that he was not in favor of, of, not that he wasn't in favor of the, of revisiting the foundation budget, but he said if every, if the state would somehow, and I don't know how it would happen, but if the state would somehow fu- fully fund special ed, that would, it, it wouldn't pit towns and cities against each other. It would just, it would take that-
Pressure.
That pressure off. And then you could, then you could fund your schools the way that, you know, with the money that you, the existing money that you have. Which was an interesting, you know, interesting philosophy as well. But again, I don't know where that would, money would come from either, so.
Jokingly, I think I sent you an email, where it should come from.
I can't recall, but I could guess where it's coming from.
Let's hope it is.
No, so, so nothing to, nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, because, because Mike Guzzo and I need to really-
Yeah, yeah.
But we, I'm still preparing for, oh, the Finance Committee, I shared the same information with them. But I'm still preparing for the February 9th joint budget hearing. And so-
And how are you gonna, because that looked, because that looked, that presentation probably looked a whole lot different-
Yeah.
-a week ago. So you-
Yep, I'm working on that.
All righty.
Either way, either way, it'll be a good conversation, because that, which I, my understanding is the intention of that, that couple, that little paragraph in the charter about the joint budget hearing, it's, it's, the point is to, to encourage that discussion amongst the bodies, amongst the school, I'm sorry, the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, with the School Committee will be there as well, to talk about, you know, priorities of the town of Maynard.
And it sounds like, since you've been speaking with Michelle, that the Saturday meeting will not be a shock to them when they see these new numbers, so they're-
No, I share everything.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
As, as you heard at the Budget Subcommittee Committee, that was a problem last year.
No, they get it. People get it set up shortly after I get it. So much so that I haven't even had time to come up with the recommendation. That's, that was the point I was trying to make, Mr. Chairman. But I'm, I'm fortunately giving you bad news without an answer.
No, I understand. I mean, we-
Understand.
So I'll just-
We, so, you know, every year you come, you're used to that. You get used to it after the first year, because it's almost every year that it's similar, so.
Well, there you go. So again, that's a good point. We don't, there's a big asterisk. We don't know.
Maybe it won't snow, and we can pick up some-
Don't, don't even talk.
Yeah. All right, so.
That's all I have for that, Mr. Chairman.
All right. And then I guess it moves us into the, um, Town Administrator Report, Stephanie's report.
I had a question for Stephanie on that. When are nomination-
Are you being serious?
When are nomination papers due for people who want to run for the vacancies?
March.
Is that on here?
It just says that the election's May 7th, but I didn't see a date.
March.
March, okay.
I think it's the end of, the beginning, middle of March type of timeframe, I believe, with my paper told me.
Uh, yeah.
I bet it's right here, hold on.
So, it's in there, March 23rd or something.
Hold on, I'll find it.
I think that would be a good thing for us to-
Nomination.
-post on the town Facebook page.
Oh, absolutely.
Get the word out.
Okay.
With deadline.
So last day to poll papers is March 15th. It doesn't say when they're due.
Yeah. I think it's a week after the last day to poll, like the 23rd.
Okay.
All right. So that's it.
Nothing else, Mr. Chairman. I, it's a very thorough report. I'm proud of the staff that put this together, and we will be putting this on the website, so if you can read it. But, um-
All right. So I have in my hands, for everybody, a copy of Adam Costa's redline version to Joel Kahn of the, of the thing, the MOA. I just, I just made, this is-
That's the same with the one we got already?
I think it might be the same as the one we got, but-
I think it's the one, yeah.
This is the latest and greatest that Greg said he had as of, you know, the last couple of days. So I just want to make sure we all have the same document.
Okay.
I, we, the only reason we didn't put it on the agenda was because I didn't want to put it on there, because I didn't want to have people come here and sit to just have us hand out a piece of paper. So I figured we'll just hand it out. And the reason why is, I guess Joel is, Joel is gonna go through it and get back to us.
He hasn't.
But he's gonna go through it and get back to us.
Oh, he does, okay.
He, he-
And we haven't decided when we want to talk about this.
Correct. And so he's, he hasn't given me any, well, he's given me a little responses that he's excited to start talking with you all about this, but-
He's excited?
That's maybe why.
Different things excite different people, you know.
That's what I'm saying.
Probably excited it's moving forward.
I don't think he's, I don't think he's-
He's encouraged that it's moving forward.
Oh, okay, that's a better-
I don't think he's commented on it, but I guess the question from Greg to me, in, insofar as building the agendas going forward, was, you know, when and how. And I said that I think it's a, a, something that, you know, the five of us ought to decide, the when and how of it.
Can we try to see if Adam Costa can be present? Because it's gonna be hard to negotiate the legal aspects of this, with Joel without him.
Yeah.
Good point, yeah.
I guess the-
We asked if he was gonna be available on the 5th. I don't wanna call it.
And he's, he's available, we just needed to know what time.
I think, I think we were looking to Adam, the, not the 5th, but the next meeting?
Nineteenth.
And, and I guess the question that we had was, do we want to put it on our agenda for us to discuss what we have on our hand right here for the, for the 5th? And then carry that discussion into the next meeting and invite Joel and Adam Costa to be a part of the, the processes, as well as obviously anyone else that wants to attend. But so, you know, but that's, that's that.
So, so, just so I, I'm clear, for the meeting on the 5th, we should, you know, if we have suggestions about what we think should be added or changed, or whatever, we should bring, we should bring those ready to talk about.
On the 5th, and/or if we have any questions, any of us have individual questions for Adam based on his redline information to Joel. And then Joel will tell us, you know, and for the, for the 19th, you know, we'll also have to hear from Joel what in here he doesn't like, I guess. So I didn't, I didn't know if, how you all felt about it, or if, you know, if anybody wants to put it off further, or, or how everybody feels about it.
Seems fine to me. I think while we have it in hand, we might as well have it on the agenda regardless, and then if we don't need to speak about it.
Yeah, no, that's-
If we could have an opportunity to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, the 5th is really just, if we have anything, anyone has anything that jumps out and that they want to talk about, it's for us to discuss before we sit with him on the 19th or whenever we have him in.
Well, that's, that's what I'm wondering, is if there's a way, I, you know, if there's stuff that, that we, we want to add, if there are things that we want to add, can we decide on that? I, I know it might be a little bit tough, but can we decide on that on the 5th, so that when he comes back on the 19th, we actually have a concrete list that we can give him, so he can respond, as opposed to, I think the last time when he was here, it was more kind of an open dialogue of the five of us throwing things out there and not really having a, a united idea. I guess that's my question. I guess that's my-
I would think, I would think that that would be appropriate, and it would be appropriate to send it to Adam.
Yeah.
So Adam might-
So you could make-
You know, so Adam could either make, make redline changes, or Adam could make his own notes, so that he's ready for any type of discussion that we have, based on what he, we have here. I just wanted to, when we, when I saw the email about, you know, Joel wanting to get back together type of thing, I said, well, let's make sure everyone's looking at the same document. Because in the past, I know David and I, and, you know, when we have other, other things before the board, we've kind of had maybe two different sets of redline versions in front of us. So this, just make sure we all have the same piece of paper. So that's really all this is about. And I didn't want to put it on the agenda, because I didn't want to have, you know, the interested parties come expecting conversation or, or discussion, when really we're not talking about any of that, other than just when we want to talk about it. So we'll put it into the 5th, and then we'll invite them based on the 5th for the 19th, unless something, we have some crazy issue on the 5th.
And you, would you like that?
If, if everyone agrees. So if that's, if the five of us agree, that we all agree.
I'm, I'm for it.
Melissa is not able to attend the 5th, but certainly if she has any thing, we'll keep her abreast of what happens.
You can email me, and I can provide, give you what. You can't email the rest of them.
Yeah.
I can email you, like, please email us, yeah.
Email me, and then I'll have them ready.
So that's all I have. And then if anybody else, Aaron?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Gavin?
Yeah, a couple things. Greg, can you check, I should have mentioned it to Aaron when he was here. It's great to see the flag up down at Alumni Field, it's, but it's not all the way up. It's about three quarters of the way up.
Oh.
I don't know if the rope is stuck, or whatever, but it's not flying.
Not flying high.
Not flying at the top.
Okay.
I wanted to also commend the DPW for the ice storm work that they did. I heard from a number of people, comments about, once again, how managed roads compared to those in the surrounding communities seem to be safer to drive on and in better condition. So good for them, thank you for them, and good work. I commented earlier, and Justine might have some additional comments, about the Budget Subcommittee. We met, had our discussion. This new development from the Governor's, uh, House One bill isn't great news, but I think we had some good discussion at that, at those meetings. And, you know, everybody realizes it's a tough, tough situation that we're working on. We're just continuing to push it. Also, the Affordable Housing Trust met last week as well. We did hear from, one of the members of the Coolidge School is on our, is on that committee, so we heard a little bit of the brief summary of what, what they're doing. They're, they're really doing some good stuff with that. And the Affordable Housing Trust is continuing to sort of develop and grow and, and learn a little bit about what's going on. So a lot going on with that stuff. And we actually, actually also reviewed some documents from over at the View, because there's a requirement that the Housing Trust give some approval and, and authority on certain things. For example, the number of, of handicapped accessible units should not necessarily all be allocated to affordable units. The reason being, people don't like those necessarily if they're able-bodied, because they have lower cabinets and, and wider doors and, and whatever. And they had most of them allocated as affordable. Additionally, parking spaces, you know, we talked even about parking spaces. It appeared that they didn't have the same number of parking spaces allocated to affordable units as they did to. Then, so then that raised this discussion about the availability of garages that might Additionally, parking spaces, you know, we talked even about parking spaces, it appeared that they didn't have the same number of parking spaces allocated to affordable units as they did to, uh, then, so then that raised this discussion about the availability of garages that might be there, and whether or not they'll avail garages to the affordable units at the same, uh, available rate. So those are the types of issues, it wasn't, you know, I don't think anybody did anything, um, with any intent, it was just that those are the, and we have a, a consultant that's working with us, Liz Rust, who's working with us on that, so, um, and, you know. So those are the types of discussions that we had on relative to, uh, to the Parker Street development. But we continue to work.
Anything else?
No.
Alright, before, before I forget and move on, can we, can we, um, try and put to bed over the next couple of weeks, the, um, STANTEC conflict of interest issue? I'm quite sure that it's not, but I'd just love to get someone from, um-
So Kate Fedoroff was assigned by the, by the county council, and she's on it, and she-
My observation on that is, it seems that, my understanding of his complaint, when it first came to us, was that, because we were talking about water at that point. Uh, the whole, we were talking about White's Pond.
Yeah.
And the connection between White's Pond and that STANTEC was gonna be doing the consulting work on that particular project. Now he shifted it to going back to the review, whereas before it seemed to me that he was saying that it was a, the conflict was that because they had done the analysis of, um, the-
Powder mill.
Powder Mill sewer piping, that there was, that they shouldn't be reviewing the water piping. And that's where I was confused, that there was a disconnect, Chris at that night was saying, this has nothing to do with sewer, it has to do with water.
I-
Tonight, he switched it again, and he was talking about it relative to, um, the sewer.
No, I, I think the way I read it was that he used, uh, conflict of interests is because the owners, or the developers from Powder Mill is using the same company we're using as a town.
No, he, yeah, he's-
Right, that, that's been, yeah, that's been consistent, but before he was focused on the water.
But here's the, here's the issue. All they did was, all that they did was, um, all STANTEC did, and as far as that goes, I believe, and Melissa might know, because I know it's one of the things that we talked about way back in the day with Joel, was they analyzed the report from Wayne's Drains, who is a company that actually scopes and videos the pipes. And he's trying to say that since they were part of that review of that, um, that work-
That work, right.
They shouldn't have any part in any of the other part of that project going forward, and I don't know that that's accurate or not, or that creates a conflict of interest, but it's also-
So is that something from league-
He's also saying Maynard can never use STANTEC again because of that.
Yeah, it seems, it seems as though he's trying, it seems as though he might have an issue with STANTEC, I don't know, but I, I, it doesn't seem to me that, you know, we've been using STANTEC for years and years and years, and we've had, you know, we've had Wayne's Drains, how many miles of our sewer have they, have they filmed over the last few years alone, just, you know, up on, um, up Waltham Street, over the hill? And, uh, we, they did some of the work in the, um, area where the folks had some water problems, Wayne's Drains did the work, and STANTEC was involved in the, um-
The presidential?
Yeah, and STANTEC was involved in all that, so they've been involved in it all along, their, our water and sewer-
Same as STANTEC, and that's, so-
Guys.
So my initial response, as it, as was town council's, was that we already have STANTEC as a retainer, similar to we have PHB and a number of other contractors. And so, but we said, look, this is a project, just like any other project, we have a design consultant, we have certain consultants, we pay these people to tell us their professional opinion, whether it's a good for town or not. We're gonna have them do that, but the project proposer, in this case, Joel Kahn and the crew of Powder Mill Place, you will, you will pay that bill, that, for the services that we would normally do. And so, we didn't think it was a conflict of interest, because it wasn't outside their, their scope. However, Kate Fedoroff, as I said, was assigned by the town council, she, she is developing a formal opinion to, but as it turns out, there's a lot, case law to it, and it's taken a long, long time.
So, so is that something you could respond to him and say that you'll get a report soon, or?
You want me to?
I've told him, I've told him a couple of times that town council is working on it.
Okay.
I, I told him that tonight as well, you know.
That came, did that come from you, saying that that's?
We requested it.
I, I give the-
Direction from, okay.
He, he asked you, like, I tell you.
He's asked us a few times, and we've talked about it, that in, in, I know that-
Maybe he wants something in writing, I don't know.
Yeah, he wants it, he wants it, he wants an opinion in writing at some point.
And I'm, I'm getting that opinion.
That's what it, and that's what's taking the time, so.
Yeah, yeah.
He brought up the AGE special election certification of the voting, and I thought we already had a written opinion.
Well, you, you, you responded to that, I think, to us, didn't you?
But maybe only to you, I don't-
I don't know if we ever gave him-
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can tell him, at the next meeting, we can tell him, the, the Attorney General's office, that, that that was the, the ruling, right?
But we can do that, but you, you have to tell me.
No, like, we can tell him too, like, we, I don't, I don't know.
No, no, yeah, we can do it on, at the next meeting.
If it's a document, if it's a document, just bring it, we'll just bring it to the next meeting and hand it, so here it is.
I think it was an email, that was the thing, it was like a forwarded email from-
Yeah.
That's usually how I do it, if I, if I hear it and agree, I tell you the answer.
And then, and then there's the other two things I, that he brought up.
Yeah, the advisory.
Uh, DPW Advisory Committee and a, and a Cable Committee.
Cable Committee.
I know there was a, I know we should have had a Cable Committee, but, um, the gentleman who negotiating, was negotiating with the Cable people, never created that committee, and he was asked to several times, and that, he's no longer with the town.
I, it's a right, I can speak to that.
Yeah, I know you can't, but that's, that's why it didn't happen, this last go around, because we, you know, Becky asked me, and I asked him, and, oh, yeah, yeah, and he, and it went a different way, and he did it himself. So it did not happen the way it was supposed to. And whether or not that has any part of the rate increase that came after that thing was done, I don't know.
I don't think, I think that was just the coincidence.
I think it's coincidence, yeah, I think it's coincidence too, but-
But that's the way he read it.
But, but you throw some mud in the water, it still gets murky.
Yeah.
And then we got, then we got Aaron is gonna work with Betsy to get the litter picked up.
Uh, I'm gonna give her my five minutes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, so, so on the advisory thing for the, um, DPW, is that something that we already have in place, or?
I, I-
No, so-
So, so, that's what I'm gonna say, can you, can we verify that he's looking at a current version of the charter and the bylaws?
Okay.
Because I have that other issue that I have going in the background with, um, Al Whitney, that's been resolved to everybody's satisfaction, yet he, not to his, and, um, he's talking about versions of bylaws and charters that I don't see answers to.
Right, I only look at one version of the charter.
Yeah, that's right, but you and I have, we look at one, there's how many revisions out there, and different people see different things and interpret it different ways.
Okay.
So, I'm just, I just want to make sure before we ask for volunteers for, um, a, a Cable Committee and/or a DPW Advisory Committee, that we are still-
Right.
Under, um, you know, direction to do that.
Well, or, and I would, uh, I would ask for, that I could provide you my recommendation, whether a DPW, I don't know what the term for the group is, is still-
Is necessary.
Necessary, yeah, should, similar to the Cable Advisory Committee, if we've already done the negotiations, but, um, yeah, so I could provide you that.
It is in the current charter, um, that there would be a Public Works Advisory Committee to consist of three members.
Is that, is, who's that appointed by?
Uh, Board of Selectmen.
Public Works Advisory Committee, so, yeah.
So we have Becky volunteered, and Betsy volunteered, it's one.
And it is also-
Oh, oh, you were stretch, you were stretching?
And it is also in the charter with a Cable Television Committee to consist of five men.
He, he does his homework before he comes here.
Oh, no, no, no question, but I just want to make sure, because, there's not-
No, that's not, it's-
But I mean, to your point, you need to let us know what you think, whether or not it's still important for us to have an advisory.
It doesn't say what their charge is though, does it?
No.
What, what we-
No, no, no more than any of the other committees that are appointed.
Right, okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll talk with Aaron about it.
Okay.
If, if you would want me to do the-
And it says, as provided by bylaws, so then you have to go and look at the bylaws to see what the bylaws say relative to.
Okay. I'll let you do it.
Justine, anything?
I have a lot.
That's why I left it for you.
You, yeah.
It's been a busy week, it's been a busy three, I haven't been here three weeks, no, um, I'll be quick. First off, Budget Subcommittee meeting, I agree with David, I think that, I honestly think that, I went to a few of the meetings last year, um, it was really great to watch the collaboration this year. Um, I, I really thought we were on really solid footing until the governor's budget came in, you know, that, that's just what happens. But I also think having that open communication is just priceless. You know, I think that we all in that room recognize the fact that, um, the tax bills in this town are high, and we know that. The only way tax bills in this town are gonna go down is if we increase the revenue, or if we don't increase the town budget at all. And unfortunately, we have to increase the town budget as just a cost of, of doing business. Um, you know, salaries go up, you need to buy, you need to repair roads, you need to have schools, you need to have police and fire stations, so, um, or police and fire departments. So, it was just, it was really good to have these conversations, we, we all recognize that there's, that there are struggles, but, um, we're, we're really all trying our best to, to keep the residents in mind. So that was one thing. Armin and I and a number of leaders went to the MMA Conference, that was a lot of, a lot of fun, there was a lot of interesting information there, so, um, I look forward to going back next year, actually, Becky, you can sign me up already. And then I was able to go to Art Space, I don't know how much longer they're doing it, but they do, they did an only in Maynard, um, artist-
The twenty-second, I think it is, something like that.
Twenty-second of February?
Yeah.
Um, which is really cool, I know on, Saturdays are open from eleven to three, um, and it's just the main gallery part, and it has all, um, a number of different Maynard art, artists submitted works, and that was really great. Um, and I was also able to, Armin and I were able to take a walk, uh, to go see the, um, a tour of The View, as David was talking about, um, at one twenty-nine Parker Street, um, and see the developer, the development that's coming along. That was, I thought, I was very impressed with it. I was very impressed with, with, uh, the people who gave the tour, um, the contractors there, uh, the developers there, they, they really seem on top of things, so, um, so it's good that, that the Affordable Housing is, is keeping there, you know, is, is reminding them of certain things, but I really do think that they're, they're really willing to be good business partners, um, so that's good. Um, and then I went to the Friends of Maynard Seniors Night, um-
You were the youngest one there.
With, with Armin, oh, were you there too?
What did you show up?
Depends who was telling the bar.
Exactly, oh, the, the bar was, the young couple.
So, and that was, that was really great.
I heard her six games.
Oh, so we missed you.
Yeah, I, I would say I left, I left right, probably, probably passed you in the parking lot, um, so, but it was, it was really great to see, and, and, you know, I said, I said to Armin, I said, you know, that's part of, it really is part of the beauty of this town, is the fact that we have things like a Monopoly game ma- named after Maynard. There's, you know, I, I mean, these things that are, that are quirky and fun and, and special, and the fact that residents get involved and really make a difference, it, it really, it really does make a difference in this town.
And, and Middlesex Savings Bank stepped up, and they donated fifteen thousand dollars, so, that's kinda-
Yes, yes, they did. And Friends of Public Life.
Yeah, and their library, correct.
I want to say something, I forgot all about this, I was gonna say something, I went to, I went to the Coral Springs Museum of Art-
Oh, yeah.
Down in, down in the Fort Lauderdale area, and I went, and I went there to see two of Donna Dodson sculptures that are on display.
Oh, wow.
They were not at the museum, one was at, you know, um, at the intersection of the, uh, Florida Turnpike and Atlantic Boulevard, Atlantic Avenue.
It's huge.
Out in the middle of, in a lever, it, it, where it sits over the levee.
Wow.
And the other one sits in a, um, a public park in Coral Springs. So her two statues are out in the two places, and we went and, uh, took a field trip one day.
Isn't that cool?
Took a field trip one day, went out there, it was, it was kinda cool, because we went to the museum, and I was like, yeah, hey, you know, we were in the middle of a, um, school field trip, first of all, and as loud as that, crazy loud, like, you know, three hundred kids. And so we went in and we, we saw the kids, and we were like, oh, this is killing me, so we went in and said, hey, we're here to see the, um, you know, perseverance and the, and the mythmakers, and the girl, the girl said, oh, they're not here. Excuse me? So anyway, they, they directed us in the right place, and we went and we, so we saw a little bit of the museum, and then we went out and saw around Donna and Andy's two statues, and it was, it was kinda cool, she's like, oh, why do you want to see those? I said, wow, a friend of mine, and a, a woman that lives in our town, uh, they, they built them, and they, they erected them here, and so it was pretty cool.
Isn't that cool?
And it was kinda funny, a couple of days later, someone posted somewhere that they were driving down the Florida Turnpike, and it, they jammed on their brakes, because they saw it. And I'm like, yeah, you could jam your brakes on, but they're right there, right, one of them's right, literally right on the highway, like, it stands almost on the highway, it's only about thirty feet off the, off the shoulder. And then the second one is in a, um, more of a parkland setting, but it was kinda cool to, um, see some Maynard art in South Florida.
Is it similar to the one on Summer Street?
Very much so, yeah, very, very similar.
Yeah, it's more bamboo, it's made of bamboo.
More bamboo, and I think some steel too, it looks like there might be a steel superstructure under there, but-
What's the, because, speaking of Donna, what's the, because they thought, they're talking about putting new sculptures in front of, uh, the art space?
Yep.
And what's, is it something that they could put in a park too, or is that something that we could agree on, or?
I, I think down there in particular, that particular area, that those things ended up where they did because of the, um, the grounds of the museum are pretty limited.
Okay.
So, I mean, but hers, you know, if you, if you kinda follow Donna's things, um, they show up in some pretty wild places.
No, I'm just saying our park.
She actually has a book of the places where they go, so the answer's yes, she has her, her displays and her art and, uh-
Oh, because I'm just wondering whether or not we could take advantage of it and have it in our park, you know?
Right, which park though?
The one across from Art Space.
Oh, the one across the street.
This, I mean, this-
Carboni, Carboni Park.
I don't, I don't know if there's anything-
I mean, not in front of, um, uh, fine arts.
Oh.
Oh, I mean, I mean, Summer Street.
Huh?
It's kinda-
Memorial, it's kinda tight.
But, but, and, and there was a, a community plan, which is what the performance stage and then the practice-
Yeah, by the way, I'm not impressed with that performance stage.
You know what it is though, it's a, it's, it's, I think it's supposed to be like an amphitheater.
Really?
So you sit up here, and then they're down here, that's what I'm going with.
Really?
I will say-
You're going with that? Okay.
Kinda what I'm going with.
We just built it.
Who's laughing?
What's different, it's, I, I will say that, I will say that it's different than what I thought it was to be.
Me too.
I thought, when they talked about a stage, that it was gonna be more of an elevated situation.
Me too. That's what I thought it was.
You know, but, 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 it might be that-
Maybe it would be nice.
That spot will be a better spot to put a stage when it comes time to put that up.
I, right, I, I think they were still planning on putting risers.
Oh, they are, oh, okay.
But I don't-
I don't know, we'll have to find out, but it, yeah.
But it's better to go on that than the grass, because those risers were indoor, I think there was high school's chorus risers, and they, they were not meant for-
Yeah, they were, they were, they were also, they were particle board, so they were kinda falling apart.
And we're in the right direction.
Alright.
DPW, true.
It's nice and lit at night, it looks nice.
Yeah, it is, so, Melissa?
Yes. Um, so quickly, so I'm a big fan of the trash and recycling program kinda going on downtown, I've been pushing that for a while. But to that point of what Aaron brought up with the BEEP grants, you know, having been on EDC, like, the EDC had done a BEEP grant as a committee to get like the flower pots downtown on the light poles and stuff like that. So if Aaron's approach is maybe money could come from that, could a single resident bring forward a BEEP grant application to do that? Because it was designed that only businesses could apply for BEEP grants, that's how it's been fostered to the town.
Well, so the BEEP grants comes from the Downtown Enhancement Fund.
Right.
And you, you, similar to how you, uh, um, provided twenty-five thousand dollars to the Sesquacan, Seswa-
Sesquicentennial.
Hundred and fifty years.
Yes. So, so you could, I would, I, so Aaron and I, he gave me a wink, because we didn't talk about what he told you beforehand, but we would have had a conversation of, well, maybe not a BEEP, maybe, uh, just directly from the Downtown, Downtown Enhancement Fund, but I would have to look at the remaining funds and what we've already covered, so, and whatever the cost of these things are, so, so we will, we will go through it, and then maybe there's grants, I don't know.
There's probably, there's gotta be like federal grants or state grants for, um, for-
They're not cheap though, I do know that, I was talking to the city boss, and they were being introduced to, uh, South, and they-
Like, I don't even know that like-
And I, then we have to pay collectors, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, but like, I, I know that the, the solar compactors are really expensive, but even as a starting point, if we just have trash cans and recycling receptacles, and DTPW picked up like once a week, I think it would go really far. Like, I've noticed even where my office is, there's just trash, like, in the mornings, from people walking around at night, and it, it just, because there's no public receptacle anywhere, I think it would go a long way. And I just know, like, I like the flower project that they've done, but that's like fourteen thousand dollars a year, and I think people are more likely to look at eye level at the street and notice the trash, and they are to look up and see the flowers, that we have to start picking and choosing where money goes for downtown enhancement.
But I think businesses could also sponsor those solar things, I think you could put your name on the side of the, that could, that's something, right?
Definitely.
We could sell advertising, we have to go through procurement a lot, but yes, we can sell that advertising. And so, but one could argue that you get the pedestrians on your streets that cause the litter, because of the beautification efforts that you've made.
Right.
So you're attracting people downtown because of the flower pots.
Right.
So, yeah, I see it as not necessarily a bad thing that we have litter, because that means people are on our streets, we just have to now compensate for that traffic.
Right, I just think we need to address it.
Yeah.
And so my other thing that just like crossed my mind the other day, is I know that Art Space's lease is coming up, you know, we rent to Art Space, we own the building for a dollar, and I just, I think that's gonna be a longer negotiation, given the situation that that building's in, from what I'm, I've heard. And I just think, if they're not gonna be proactive about it, we had it on the agenda like a year ago that it was coming, and we haven't revisited it yet.
No, the, uh, they have been proactive to their credit, so, um-
I know they've reached out to us individually, that's why I'm thinking, like-
Oh, oh, Linda?
Yeah, and she's tried to meet with us all individually.
So Linda, uh, Spears, she met with me, um, a number of times, actually, um, she, she has approached me, actually, uh, to, to her credit, um, and we've already started discussing it. And then I tasked, um, Aaron and Tim Goulding specifically, the facilities director, to really, to really come up with what the costs to the town are of maintaining that building.
Mm-hmm.
Because that needs to be, I, I, I would begin negotiations with a consideration to what are the costs to the town to maintain that building, so we've already started-
Aren't they responsible though, under the current lease for maintaining the building?
That's true, but we still chip in from time to time, when they flooded, we helped them out, like, there, there are costs that we, and we don't, we even hang in, like, we are their landlords.
Right.
But, so, I would want to capture that in some sort of negotiations, which she is open to.
Yeah.
So, so, we have started, because I signed that to DPW, that'll be the kind of the groundwork into going into it.